Good afternoon, welcome to the Tuesday, March 10th, 2020 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Ingalls, we have certification on our agenda.
We do, Mr. Chair. My office has reviewed all items on today's agenda, and they all meet legal approval.
Thank you, sir. And do any of the commissioners have any disclosures for any item on our agenda today?
I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I have none, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
And I have none. And our first order is recognition of some boards and commissions' appointees that have served us so well through the years, and they, and I mean through the years, the many of the ones we're going to recognize. And the first one I would like to recognize is Inga Taxar. Any of you'd like to come to the lectern? And you should just be able to speak to the microphone, but I just want to mention a few words. Inga has served us greatly. She has been with the Parks, Trails, Building, and Grounds Advisory Board for over 23 years. And her expertise has just been very valuable. Your insight has just been very welcome. And one thing I always know, and I talk to your husband too, which I see is in the room, Marvin Taxar, a former Planning Commission member I served with, you always drive around the county. I think it's almost every weekend that you must do that, not only just for enjoyment of being on a Sunday drive, but to see how we are doing with the Parks and Trails and Grounds. And I think that has such been a valuable service to us, Inga, that we are very thankful for all you have done.
Thank you so much.
As the Commissioner.
I enjoyed it.
Inga, I'd like to thank you for what you've done. I've known you for quite a few years, and you just always look the same. You've got a great smile on your face, and you're very interested in what's going on. So thank you for your contributions to the county.
Yeah, I will never, I will never forget it, and I will always remember it as a very pleasant time. And I'm still always interested what is going on in Douglas County because that's my home, and that's where I'm. For over 40 years, I have lived here, and it's the best place. Every time I think about, well, should I change or do something else? But I, no, this is it. I'll stay here.
Well, Inga, I appreciate you saying that you'll never forget because we won't either when we look about the 23 years you spent serving and your specific accomplishments around the East-West Regional Trail, the Bluffs Regional Park, Bayou Gulch Regional Park, the Fairgrounds, Cherry Creek Regional Trail, and the Highland Heritage Regional Park. Both myself, my family, the families we know in and around Douglas County have really benefited from the experiences at all of those locations. So those are tremendous hallmarks that we will never forget either. So thank you.
Inga, we have a plaque we'd like to present to you, and if you don't mind, we have a couple other recognitions for boards and commissions. So if you wouldn't mind, we'll have you come up with the others, and we'll do some separate photos, but it gives us the opportunity to come forward.
Yeah, thank you.
And we still do shake hands and hugs, even though we do recommend we use our rail, and we're sensitive to that because we are so thankful for all your years, Inga.
Thank you very much.
Two others we'd like to recognize today have done, again, a great service. This is to the Cultural Council. We have two members that will be, have gone off the board after many years. One is, I'm going to recognize Jack Christiansen. And Jack, if you'd like to come to the lectern, say a few words.
Yes, okay. And then also, and Jack's good, Jack didn't want to be alone, so we're going to also recognize Heidi Bowman.
I know both of these well. They're my appointees, and I just really appreciate the years of service, the expertise, the time you put in it. And we are very fortunate to have what we do here in Douglas County from the arts standpoint, and you have been a big service to us on that. And we thank you so much. So with that, any commissioners? Further Commissioner comments?
Again, this is an important duty because there's, like, I read something, you've probably looked at eight and a half million dollars that have come through since you've been on the board and so on the council. So there's a lot of responsibility there. But what you have done is created a lot of opportunity for the children in this community. So thank you for what you've contributed.
My goodness, Jack, you've contributed to over 765 grant awards, and it sounds like you've played an integral role in terms of the art encounters, which is now sort of an establishment in Douglas County. And, you know, Heidi, looking at the 2019 SCFD Engage in Power Connect Summit, I know you were really involved with that. And I think you were really involved with the using social media piece. I'm still figuring that out. I need to ask my kids how to do that. But thank you so much. It's a big contribution to our community.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity for taking part in things that make the county better in the long run. And I'm getting of an age now where my forgetter is a lot more efficient than my rememberer, so I'm glad to have served.
I appreciate the opportunity to serve you and the community so well in bringing the arts and its history and its culture, making it available, its preservation as well. And as it moves forward, the social media piece is becoming so very important. So making certain that the council members' future have that very vested interest in the community to explore all those options that make a difference in the great funding that's coming into the pot to be distributed. So, so thank you so much. It is a wonderful time investment, and it's improved my family's life. It's part of why choosing to raise four children here has been such a pleasure. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And if the audience will bear with us for a few moments, we're going to come down and get individual pictures with Inga, Jack, and Heidi. Thank you, everyone. And just to comment on our citizen advisory boards, that's one of the very important public service jobs I think we can, we see in the county because it's really the input from the public that we're able to use. And these advisory boards listen, hear, and then advise we, the commissioners, and the county in the next steps to make us one of the best counties in the country. So we can thank you all for your great service. Brings us to our next item. Item number two is citizen and organizational comments. If there's anyone in the audience would like to address the board regarding any item on the... We will go to item number two after we do one more employee, and actually, an employee recognition. And Kim's over there saying, "No, no, Commissioner." I apologize. We actually have another commissioner, employee recognition, and presenting for staff, Kim Hurst, to recognize Helen Kellogg.
I'm going to ask Helen to come up here so she doesn't run away while I'm talking and maybe head out the door because she's like having a cardiac arrest. She doesn't like the attention. But today, I'd like to formally announce to everyone in the audience and anyone that's listening online that Helen celebrated her 35th anniversary with Douglas County this year on February 1st. Helen officially started on February 1st, 1985, and is currently the 10th longest-tenured employee here at Douglas County. And really, all I can say to that is, wow. I tease Helen a lot because she's been here longer than when I graduated high school. So I always kind of give her those razzes every once in a while. But I wanted to let everyone know, 35 years goes by really fast, and we forget really how long that is. So I wanted to kind of give everyone a little bit of perspective of what was happening in 1985. In 1985, the interest rates implemented by the Federal Reserve was 10.75 percent. The average cost of a new house in Colorado was about $89,000. A movie ticket was $2.75, and you could get into the popular movies at that time, which was one of my favorites. I told her it's Back to the Future, Rambo, and Rocky IV. The postage stamp cost 22 cents. I told her I don't even know what it costs today because nobody uses them. Ronald Reagan was president. Margaret Thatcher was the Prime Minister of the United Kingdom, and Mikhail Gorbachev ruled the Soviet Union. The first live aid concert was held, and many of my department was privileged to hear me sing "We Are the World" this morning because they didn't even remember what it was. The new Coke formula was introduced. The Calvin and Hobbes comic strip debuted in all the newspapers. Nintendo released NES in North America. Michael Jordan was named the NBA Rookie of the Year. The first mobile phone call was made in the United Kingdom, and the first dot com was registered. Microsoft released the first vision, or first version of Windows, Windows 1.0, and Helen actually worked on that version. And compact discs were introduced. So again, wow, I just wanted everyone to see, 35 years ago, this is what we're going through and how we've emerged, and Helen's been through it all. The adopted budget in 1985 was roughly $13 million. For Douglas County, we had an estimated population of 46,325 residents and had 283.5 employees. We're roughly 1,300 employees right now. Helen has had the privilege of supporting 17 county commissioners, four county sheriffs, four assessors, and four clerk and recorders. Helen's first job here at Douglas County was a bookkeeper. That was her first title. She quickly grew in her responsibilities and transitioned into a secretary, administrative assistant, and is currently a sales and use tax specialist. If I could describe Helen in one word, the word of my choice anyway would be passionate. If you ever have the opportunity to sit down and talk with Helen, I don't want to get emotional, you will immediately see she has this enthusiasm and passion for sales tax second to no one. She just gets lost in it. In fact, she was on the open space coalition that was instrumental in getting the sales tax approved for the voters of Douglas County for the open space acquisitions a long, long time ago. So thank you for that. Helen was also a key player in helping implement the sales tax program that we currently use in 1996. And she is currently responsible for ensuring that Douglas County accurately collects the sales and use taxes due to Douglas County on a monthly basis, and that's a huge job. Helen is known as the finance, and known in our finance department, as the individual that will always step in to lend a helping hand no matter what the situation. Nothing's below Helen. She'll get in knees-deep and help you out. I consider teamwork to be one of Helen's strengths, and her consistent enthusiasm is very much appreciated. Over my tenure here at Douglas County, I've had the privilege of being Helen's peer, Helen's manager, and most importantly, to be Helen's friend. I want to thank you, Helen, for answering, for having an unwavering commitment to Douglas County. I applaud you for your dedication. It's truly been amazing 35 years. Here is your award that, thankful for you I didn't lose during budget. But I want to lend Helen my much appreciation and offer her the floor to show and tell us about her experiences over the last 35 years.
Thank you. Of course, I'm Helen Kellogg. Well, you know, I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to grow and learn here at Douglas County. Over the past 35 years, I've grown, evolved, learned, was able to see how things were changing, mostly for the good, and to see how the county has transitioned and moved with the times and preserving open space. That's, that definitely is one of my passions. I can tell you a lot of different stories of things that have happened that would make your hair curl, but we won't go there right now. I do want to acknowledge all of my coworkers, that they are the best staff to work with. You couldn't have asked for better friends and better coworkers. They're always there to back you up, good days, bad days. Basically, I appreciate the support, not only from my coworkers, but also from the board to allow me to grow and to continue with the different opportunities when sales tax came along, to be able to work on that and to be able to grow with it. I think Douglas County is, is looked at very positively statewide when, when it comes to sales tax matters. We are very involved and very knowledgeable of what's going on, and hopefully, we will continue to grow positively. And, you know, it's just a great county to live in, to work for, and the best staff in the world. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you bet. Commissioner comments?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. You know, in 1985, according to Google, the population of Douglas County was 38,847 people. So we've grown 10 times that size, nearly 10 times in your time here. And so oftentimes, we like to say we're too big to be small, but I really love to just think back to what that might have been to have been a smaller community. And the kindness and the goodness and the character of this community is something that has carried through despite us changing in numbers. So it's really a thrill when we think about the sales tax specifically. This board is not a big fan of taxes, and so we appreciate that our citizens have allowed us to collect that. But you think about the impact to open space for law enforcement, for our roads with the recent passage of our 1A measure. The impact that you've been able to help us with has been really significant. So thank you so much.
Helen, I was living here in 1985, and so I remember what it looked like then, and it really has changed for the better. But I think what's really speaks to me is that the last time we were here, we were honoring an employee who had been with the county for 40 years. And now we are here with you for 35 years. So I think that says something about who the county is and who we employ. Because every time I see you in the hall or in the elevator, or you come into the, our commission, our conference room during a conference room during a work session, you're always smiling, you know exactly where to find the information we're looking for, and you're just right there, ready to go. So I think this also speaks volumes about you. So I'd like to congratulate you on your accomplishment, and I look forward to seeing you in the halls and the elevator going forward. Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Helen, one thing I know about you is your attention to detail, and Commissioner Layden mentioned about taxes. And Helen Kellogg is the reason that I took to the Board of E470 to eliminate the highway expansion fee, and I didn't understand it. Helen gave me a great education on it. It easily, when I went to the Board, explained it with good preparation, preparatory material. There was no question. It was unanimously voted out, and so there is now no longer a highway expansion fee on each side of one and a half miles of E470, thanks to Helen. So I really appreciate all you have done. And I just also know you have your husband, Jim, in the audience. You two have been a very, very beneficial to we, the county. And one thing you've given is the two lovely daughters, which I worked in in 4H, so, and it's always a pleasure to get the update on them. So we thank you so much for the years. So you've got at least five more years in you, and I heard that 40-year employee is probably a couple more years. So, you know, we've at least got seven, 10 more years. Helen, we will be blessed.
I'm not sure about that one.
I want another 35.
35. Let's go for it.
Oh, yeah. That, uh-uh.
Helen, thank you so much, and congratulations.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Okay, now I'll get back on script and hopefully be following our agenda. We are now moving on to item number two, which is citizen and organizational comments. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board regarding any particular issue, please come forward. We do ask that if it's an item on either our consent or our regular agenda, we will hear that as that item comes forward. So if there's anyone to address the board, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will ask if there's anyone in the audience would like to address any item on the consent agenda. Yes, if you would like to come forward? If you would state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record, and then identify which item on the consent agenda.
My name is Jennifer Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R, and I'm representing the Crisis Center, and I'm on, we are on the consent agenda, and you haven't approved us yet, but I'm hoping that this is a yes. So I just wanted to thank you for all the ongoing support that you've offered the Crisis Center and the efforts of trying to make Douglas County and keep Douglas County as safe as possible. We are only able to do all the work we're able to do with the support of our public officials and the community that we serve. And I also want to recognize the team that accepts our RFAs and our grant applications, and how amazing it is to work with them. Tina and Jen and Melanie are awesome, and always appreciate being able to work with them. But I just wanted to thank the commissioners today for your support of the Crisis Center.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the board? Very well, I'll bring you back to the board for the consent agenda items, and I will note that items E, H, and AF have been pulled for the, from the consent agenda. So I'll break it to the board for any discussion on any particular item and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through D, F through G, and then I through AE of the consent agenda, because as you stated, E, H, and AF have been pulled.
Second. We have a first and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Now it moves, moves us on to number four, our regular agenda. And the first item to be heard is the IFB Award for Dispatch Console Furniture to Evans in an amount of $437,948.21. Presenting for Sheriff's Office, Captain Brad Hayden.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're asking you to approve the IFB for $437,948.21. We did a extensive research and comparison between the three manufacturers that submitted for the IFB bid, and those were Evans, Watson, and Zibek Systems. And the, you have to think of the console furniture as a place where dispatchers are at for 12 hours a day, 365 days a year, covering all shifts, 24 hours a day. They are at this console furniture, and it's, this furniture can raise and lower, has its own environmental controls, its own lighting to, so that people that have a difference in lighting or temperature can control that specific workspace for themselves and not interfere with someone that may like it warmer or colder. This system furniture has motors that raise and lower it, and has built-in lighting. And one of the features we wanted was the ability for us to identify what the dispatchers were doing, and one of the things is that a dispatcher wears a headset the entire time they're at work, and you don't know if they're listening to that headset, to a telephone call, or getting ready to transmit on the radio. And this system furniture allows you to have a color displayed in a plexiglass that will indicate they're on the telephone, they're on the radio, or they're not on any of those. So a super, dispatch supervisor could be in conversation with them without interrupting them in the middle of one of their transmissions or talking to a citizen on the telephone. And that's called situational awareness lighting. So we went through and evaluated all three and attached the, basically the comparison showing it, and Evans Furniture by far exceeded the other two, and even though it is more expensive, it is what we need in dispatch. The design of it is also a better design than the other two, and gave a better workflow through the dispatch center. We're going from having 12 consoles to 18 consoles, and you, the commissioners, approved six more dispatch positions for this year, and we needed to expand to cover those. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. Questions for Captain?
Yes, Captain Hayden, thank you for this information. As I was going through the packet, I noticed that of the three proposals that you were provided, the Evans one that you've chosen is the most expensive one. So can you, when I was reading through here, I see that it says that the IFB specifications are not always met. Can you just explain the differences and why the most expensive one is the one that's been chosen?
So one of the specification requirements was, again, that lighting that require, that allows us to tell what the status of that dispatcher is. And we didn't want to have a bunch of poles, which is what a lot of the agencies, different manufacturers use. We wanted it to be non-obtrusive for line of sight to see what's going on, because dispatch supervisors often have to look across. And so the situational awareness lighting was, the only one offered was Evans that had it where it was inside plexiglass. The standard of the furniture itself is much stronger for Evans Furniture, and the actual millwork, the board, is rated for earthquakes, and so is the motors that raise and lower. And you may say, "Well, we don't have any earthquakes," but we do have dispatchers that raise and lower that equipment all the time, and so it's going to have a better lifetime warranty of it. And then we currently have Watson Furniture in our dispatch center, and we have Zibek's Furniture in our detentions facility, and we've had more problems. One of the things that Watson and Zibek's both require is that if there's a problem, the dispatcher or facilities maintenance or someone has to come through and do a check on the equipment on the telephone, basically, and go through a checklist of customer-required checklist before you can get a person to come out and respond to replace whatever it is, a motor, or lights, or whatever it is. So you're required in their warranty to do that, where Evans doesn't require that. The actual quality of the furniture has been viewed. We went to Westminster Police Department, and the dispatchers saw what was available in both Zibek's, Evans, and Watson at other centers, and Superior, Evans was considered the superior furniture of all of those.
Thank you. Will the 911 Board be paying for any of this equipment?
Yes, um, yes, it is. In the 2020 budget, this was budgeted for the entire console furniture costs, and including the radio and telephone systems that'll be added to it.
So then the 911 Board will be reimbursing the county for all of this?
Actually, they will just pay it directly, the 911 Board. Well, their requirement is to come to your city or county and go through their purchasing agreement, but they will pay it directly.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Other questions?
Yes, just a few questions and a comment. First, Captain, thank you so much for being here today. We love our dispatchers in Douglas County, and it's not lost on us the number of hours that they spend in that environment. And so certainly clear that it's so important that they have the space that's functional. I know Commissioner Thomas spent much of her career in dispatch and is familiar with that as well. I was surprised by the distinction in terms of price, $437,948 for the selected vendor, and the next two were $325 and $283. So I appreciate the conversation about the 911 Board. What was the total budgeted amount originally?
For just the furniture, it was $450,000.
Okay.
That the 911 Board approved.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Good. No further questions? Thank you, Captain Hayden. This time, we'll open up for anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board regarding item number one. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and bring you back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve IFB Award, number IFB 050-19, for Dispatch Console Furniture to Evans in the amount of $437,948.21.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Captain Hayden.
Commissioners, before you call up the next item, there was an item on your agenda, item L for Lance, and it was missing three standard exhibits. Those were sent to you earlier today, but they were not posted online. So if for any reason you want to reconsider that, you may do so, but please understand that the item that's in your packet would add three standard exhibits that you've seen probably dozens of times each, and probably hundreds of times over the years for Douglas County. But those were not in your packet. I want to bring that to your attention. Jennifer Eby and Don Johnson from my office are here. If you want an explanation of what those exhibits were, you don't need to take any action. You've already approved the item, but if any of that, if any of what I've said changes your opinion, you might want to call that item up.
Would any of the Commissioners like to discuss those?
I would not, thank you.
And I wouldn't either. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls, for bringing that forward, though. Our next item is purchase of real estate located at 2801 Highway 85, units 106 and 107 in Castle Rock, in the amount of $577,220, with estimated closing cost of $5,000, and tenant finish of $77,780. Presenting for your staff, Tim Hallmark.
Our current historical repository resides in a lease facility that lease officially expires the end of April of this year. So several months ago, we began the search, looking for a new location to house the repository. Looked at several properties ranging from leases to purchases, and landed on kind of what we thought was the best option for Douglas County, which was to buy two units in a condo association at this address on Santa Fe.
Thank you, Ms. Hallmark. Questions for Mr. Hallmark?
I have none. I just want to congratulate you again for continuing to work hard and get better and go into college. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no further comments either. I know this was a, other than to say that I know this was a big project, took a lot of consideration. I appreciate you looking closely at the numbers and trying to identify a solution that best reflected our desires.
And I'll just mention that we, this went on for quite a while, and Tim used to have a fully dark beard when he started his process. But we, we certainly questioned a lot, because it's a, it's a, an ask that we, we didn't have a question of the ask, but certainly under the circumstances, knew that lease was going to be exterminated. We're in a time crunch. But Tim, you did wonderful work researching out numerous areas throughout the county to try and find the best solution. I think you came forward to the best solution. We have that presented to us today, so really appreciate that, Tim.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It was a lot of work you put into it. We thank you, because it, we just want to make sure we always do our due diligence with the county tax dollars. But no further questions? I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board regarding this item. Seeing no one, I'll bring you back to the board for any further discussion, comments, and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the purchase of real estate located at 2801 Highway 85, units 106 and 107 in Castle Rock, Colorado, in the amount of $577,220, with estimated closing cost of $5,000, and tenant finish of $77,780.
Second. We have a first and a second. No further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Our next item is resolution approving an amendment to the Douglas County Historic Preservation Board Policies and Procedures. Presenting for staff?
Is Katie Ryder.
Katie Ryder.
Yes. I don't get to do this very often, so I figured, you know, get used to presenting again. And on the theme of historic preservation, the item before you today is consideration of some changes to the Historic Preservation Board Policies and Procedures. There we are, on the board. So statute, section 30 of the statute provides the Board the ability to delegate its power to designate historic landmarks and historic districts to a historic preservation board. The Historic Preservation Board was originally established in 1991 to identify historical resources in the county, and over the years, the purpose of the Historic Preservation Board has expanded into areas beyond that of identifying historical resources and landmarks, into areas like land use review and curation of historic artifacts. The county has leaned on volunteers in the past to review land use applications and federally mandated 106 referrals. In support of the Board's historic resources priority, the county hired a full-time employee in 2019 to take a more holistic approach to addressing the county's historic resources, which included managing the Historic Preservation Board. The curator is able to dedicate sufficient time to fulfill the county's regulatory role in review of land use applications and 106 filings. The curator uses the state's historic resources database to review these applications, and the public is involved as a result of the county's referral and public hearing process. In addition, the curator's job duties address a majority of the HPB's listed purposes. As she manages the county's historic property restoration projects, she oversees artifact acquisition and curation at the repository, provides input regarding preservation of historic resources, and manages public outreach and education efforts. Ms. Castle, our curator, also acts as a liaison with our numerous historical organizations and partners. As a result of the duplicative nature of the HPB's current mission with existing staff job duties, staff proposes to reestablish focus of the Historic Preservation Board to making, of that, of making recommendations to the Board in response to landmark applications. Staff consulted with the Historic Preservation Board at its January meeting and incorporated changes in response to their comments. After additional review, the HPB agreed with the proposed changes, and two members expressed support of the changes and appreciated the clarification in the expectations of their purpose. Finally, the county attorney's office also reviewed the proposed changes presented to you today. So the request before you today... So the request before you today is to amend the Historic Preservation Board Policies and Procedures. The changes include refining the purpose of the HPB to that of making recommendations to the board in response to landmark applications as authorized by the statute. Due to the historically low volume of landmark applications, the HPB meetings will be held on a quarterly basis. The changes also include a reduction of the number, in the number of members from nine to six, so that it's, a quorum is more easily achieved. And finally, the eligibility requirements were revised to allow more people an opportunity to serve on the Historic Preservation Board. With that, the board may approve a resolution amending the policies and procedures of the Douglas County Historic Preservation Board as it complies with the county's approval standards and policies. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We also do have one member of our Historic Preservation Board here today.
Thank you, Katie. Questions for Katie?
I have none, thank you.
You know, I just had a couple. First, thanks for your presentation. You know, one of our core priorities is historic preservation, natural resources, and we know this is a priority for the county. And certainly appreciate when we can streamline government, make it less burdensome, make sure that policies are not duplicative. And in my mind, this really is helpful in that regard. Ms. Ryder, can you speak a little more to how historic preservation would occur going forward based upon the modifications? And then perhaps how Ms. Castle will address some of those landmarking issues that would normally have come up in the Historic Preservation Board?
This is Katie for staff. And so our landmarking process will not change. Landmark applications can be brought forward to the board by any member of the public. And really, our Historic Preservation Board will serve in that same role in terms of reviewing those applications, having a public meeting where public can come and comment on those landmark applications. And then they do make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So that does remain the same. In terms of our other historic preservation activities, we, the county does have a role in terms of commenting on land use applications. And our jurisdiction is somewhat limited to private property, but from a public property standpoint, we are beholden to statute in terms of addressing historic resources that are on public property, which is part of the reason why we have invested in our Historic Repository, to hold artifacts that are property of the state. So our roles in all of those, those procedures are not, are not changing.
That's helpful. So for the public that might be watching or listening in, how does that historic preservation look from a staff standpoint? Does Ms. Castle actively engage with the Historic Preservation Nonprofits in the community? Is it a matter of referral through staff comment, a combination of both? How does that historic preservation goal get accomplished through Ms. Castle?
It is all of the above.
All of the above.
So she does consult with our historic resource partners. Any land use applications are processed through the typical land use application process, which is referred to all of our partner agencies for comment. And then the landmark application process is also distributed for public comment and then is open to public review as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. I really don't have any questions per se, other than the time I really appreciate the staff put into this, to bring it forward, to clarify the role, but also show the great appreciation to the Historic Preservation Board. And I think you, what you bring forward is honoring the work that they really want to do. And I just want to recognize that the Historic Preservation Board is, we really appreciate the expertise and the knowledge that you bring forward, because some of those applications are not easy to complete. And it's a lot of work, a lot of time on your part, and we are so thankful for your efforts with that. Very well. No further questions? This time, we'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board regarding this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for any further comments, discussion, and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution approving an amendment to the Douglas County Historic Preservation Board Policies and Procedures.
Second.
We have a first and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Again, thank you, Katie, and thank you to the board. Brings us to our next two items, and I'm going to ask probably that they will be presented at the same time. It is the Public Contracts for Services for 2020 Aviation Wildland Fire Support is Item D. Item E is the Public Contract for Services with Trans-Aero Helicopter. And presenting for staff, Mike Alexander.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Alexander, Douglas County Office of Emergency Management. Two items before you today for your approval. First one, Item D, is a collection of contracts for companies to provide aviation wildland fire support. We have, in this particular item, four different companies that we've sought contracts with as in years past. First one is Tent Tanker. They provide large fixed wing aviation support. So those are the big planes that drop the red fire retardant slurry. The next company is Aero Seat. They're based in the northeast part of Colorado. They provide the smaller, more nimble airplanes that drop the same material but less of it. They fly a little faster and can maneuver a little easier. The next two companies are helicopter companies. Hel quest is based in the Front Range and Rampart Helicopter Services. All of these companies provide call when needed or exclusive use option contracts to us. The benefit to us is we get all the paperwork and contracting and have agreed upon rates and prices ahead of time before fire season, so that should we need them, should we call upon them, we've got everything ironed out and they can just come and respond and really apply our hard, heavy, fast approach to wildland fire suppression here in Douglas County. And they've, they've proven to be a tremendous asset to us. The second item is with Trans-Aero Helicopter Services. They're based in the Front Range. This would be an additional year of contracting with them if you so approve it. And this particular contract would provide, in addition to the call when needed services, where we call as we need that service when we have a fire of need, would provide for two 45-day periods of exclusive use, where they fly down the helicopter and their crew, and they park here in Douglas County at our facility, and they're available seven days a week, nine hours a day, to provide immediate need fire suppression during two of our peak periods. Our two peak periods for this year will be in the summer and in the fall, targeting the June 1st to July 15th, really focusing on our driest period of the summer season, and then coming back in the fall to address our fall fire season when the grass has gone dormant and we get some wind-driven fire events that have, we've seen have been really scary and really destructive for us here in Douglas County. And having those assets available to us, particularly that helicopter from Trans-Aero, on a moment's notice availability to us, we believe pays huge dividends in our ability to suppress those fires, limit the risk to our citizens' lives and property. And I'd like to open it up for any questions you have.
Questions for Mike?
So can you tell us how many times last year this Trans-Aero was used?
We used them on two wildland fires. We launched them twice for fires and I believe five or six times for training missions. So we provide training opportunities where we operate them and bring our local fire departments in and county, county emergency services folks. And we're able to really practice and fine-tune our skills in coordinating with that helicopter so that when we need them on those fires, we're ready to go and we know exactly how to use them and make the most efficient use.
So the two times that they were used for a wildland fire, how big did that fire get?
The first time we used them was over in Waterton Canyon. It was right near one of our, one of our larger subdivisions over near Roxborough. And that fire ended up being less than two acres, certainly with help from the helicopters and very steep rugged terrain. Firefighters were having significant trouble actually getting to the fire by foot. And helicopter got there first and started putting water on it very, very quickly. The second one was a similar situation. Up above Highway 67, Indian Creek area, we sent the helicopter up there. Again, difficult access. Firefighters had to do about a 30-minute, 45-minute hike to get to the fire. Forest Service requested mutual aid, and we launched a helicopter to go help them put that fire out before they actually got there again.
So it was also contained to a small number of acres?
I believe, I believe that second one was about an acre.
So it sounds like having this contract with this helicopter is a really good idea, that it's proactive?
Absolutely. No question in our mind.
Thank you.
You know, Mike, this is a really significant issue, as we all know. I had the opportunity to attend a seminar presented by your counterparts up in Jefferson County, really quantifying the potential risk of wildfire and seeing a number of properties within that top 10 list is a little bit eye-opening, to say the least. I love that philosophy that was, and a long time before I got here, of hard, heavy, and fast. And I remain concerned about the ability of aviation to get where we need and the time we need it. So in real time, can you articulate if there was an immediate wildfire event during a dry season, how quickly could this aviation support get to where it needs to go?
In a matter of minutes, potentially.
That's fantastic, okay.
Whereas if we did not have that asset available to us parked here in Douglas County, we're looking at 30 minutes to an hour, or maybe not even available at all. During peak fire season periods where we're, would otherwise rely on federal state resources, they oftentimes are committed to other fires out of our county, potentially out of the state. And so this allows us exclusive rights to this aviation asset where we know that we can count on it and it's dedicated to fires within our county. Otherwise, we have hope as a plan.
That's wonderful, considering the number of very expensive homes in and around Douglas County. I mean, million-dollar homes. This is certainly an investment that is proactive, to Commissioner Thomas's point. But if you think about the potential danger and loss economically if we, if we're not proactive, it's, it just far outweighs the cost. So thank you for bringing this.
Thank you.
Mike, great job. Again, I know you and Tim Johnson, whole emergency management team, does a lot of work to get this completed year after year. And a little bit of follow-up on the two incidents occurred last year. We had similar contracts for the other air supports. Was it necessary to call in those larger or other air supports for either one of those incidents?
Not, not for either of these two incidents. On the first incident, Waterton Canyon, the U.S. Forest Service ordered one of their resources, a helicopter base and monument, and it arrived after ours, just due to the fact that that helicopter is based in Monument, about 30 minutes further away.
Great. And I think it's wonderful, and I always like to make the comment this time to those who are listening, no doubt, this is a substantial amount. But I always make that point, all we have to have is one, one insurance claim on a house in Douglas County in this area, and it probably far exceeds the dollars here. And that doesn't take into account there may be property loss, wildlife loss, life loss. So to me, very well worth it. Again, thanks for all the great work on this.
Thank you.
No further questions? Bring it to the public. Anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board regarding these two items? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for two separate motions.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve public contracts for services for 2020 aviation wildland fire support.
Second. We have a first and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve public contract for services with Trans-Aero Helicopter for call when needed exclusive use and purchase order for two 45-day exclusive periods for 2020 in the amount of $467,400.
Second.
We have a first and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
No further business.
Thank you. And the county manager report was enclosed. And Commissioner comments?
I would just like to add that I got an email from two different people who were on the Cultural Council, who wanted to be here today to honor their peers, but they were unable to get here. Larry Perkins is the chair of that Cultural Council, and he said that, excuse me, Jack Christiansen had taught him a lot since he's been on that board, and he really appreciated working with Jack and with Heidi. And Alexander Harden was the other one who was not able to be here, but they both emailed me and please ask that I put on the record how much they enjoyed working with these individuals, how much they contributed to the Cultural Council, and that they will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make the comment to those watching that our emergency management personnel have been absolutely tremendous in recent days and weeks as we respond to the COVID-19 conversation. And I want to encourage folks to attend, or at least listen in, to the COVID-19 Virtual Town Hall tomorrow night, March 11th, 2020, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m.
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that forward. Appreciate it. No further comments? We are adjourned. We will reconvene here in just a couple of minutes for our land use and public hearing.